On Monday, January twenty seventh, please stand for the pledge of allegiance, remain standing for a moment of solemn prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. We have a roll call, Ward one, Ms. Gamble's here, Ward two, Mr. Richardson's here, Ward three, Ms. Lafontaine's here, Ward four, Mr. Clark is here, City Secretary Clerk Lisa Blanchard, the mayor, and City Attorney Ronnie Arteez. Number four, under Mayor's comments, item A, motion to amend and finalize the agenda with the addition of items four, B and C, under Mayor's comments, item seven, I and J, under Board Business.
I'll move.
What four moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three stepped out.
Three stepped out, four?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Item B, motion to ratify the mayor's declaration of emergency dated one nineteen twenty five for the city of Wavon regarding the forecasted freezing weather conditions and reschedule the regular meeting of Wednesday, January twenty second, twenty twenty five, to Monday, January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five.
So moved.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three.
Sorry, four?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Item C, spread on the minutes the governor's proclamation of a state of emergency throughout the state of Mississippi for the period one nineteen twenty five through one twenty two twenty five, recognize the expected prolonged freezing temperatures and winter weather which poses a threat to life and safety.
Move.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. Before moving on to Alderman's comments, I just want to commend a few people. You know, my background's in athletics, I always said I was just a coach of this team, and I'm only as good as my players, so. Going back to the Sunday before the freeze, we had a water main break at five o'clock in the evening, that Bo Humphrey and the Public Works Utilities guys went out and worked on to almost two o'clock in the morning, in freezing cold, couldn't find the valve to cut the water off, they worked on this valve for all those hours with water just flowing, and it was quite cold at night, so I want to commend those guys. The fire department, everybody probably seen the hundred-plus-year-old house on Omen and Second Street that went up in flames during the storm, and our fire department rolled on that, and like we always do, we help each other out, Wavon went down, helped Bay St. Louis out, and they would've done the same if it was in Wavon, so I want to commend those guys. I had a moment where I was kind of scared during the snowstorm because everybody was expecting to get paid on Thursday, so I want to commend Kylie Seal, Kylie came out in the snow on Tuesday, came back out on Wednesday, and got the payroll done, and it's made me, I was able to sleep at night because I know a lot of our employees live paycheck to paycheck, and I was afraid what would happen if they didn't get paid, so they got paid. And last but not least is the police department, the police department was in a high-speed chase over the weekend and wound up in New Orleans East, stole a car in Newton County, and they captured the guy with the help of New Orleans Police Department, they went into the swamps of Louisiana and captured this guy with the stolen car, so I just, it makes me proud to be the mayor of the city when I have good employees that work for me and with me. All right, with that being said, we'll move on to number five, Alderman's comments, Ms. Gamble.
I'm good.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Yeah, I just got one thing, Chris, the new hotel going up Highway ninety, can you go out and address the going in and out of that property, we're getting a lot of red clay on Highway ninety, I mean, it's about to rain, it's gonna turn to mud, I don't know, it looks like any more rocks on both entrances, there's a lot of red clay amongst the curb.
Okay. I certainly will.
All right.
That's it, bud?
That's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Ward three, Mr. Richardson, I mean, Ms. Lafontaine.
No, mayor, you answer mine before the meeting.
All right, thank you very much. Ward four, Mr. Clark?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
All right, thank you. Under public comments, item A, Mr. Michael Tinkler to discuss cuddles for kids. Michael?
Hi, my name is Micah Tinkler, I live at seven twenty Dix Street, it's good to be back in front of you all again, I am the broker for Double Win Realty, your Mississippi house sold or I'll buy it, for the past year, I've had the pleasure of working with Crusaders for Veterans, which helps out financially distressed vets here on the Gulf Coast, they're based out of Past Christian. Last month, Crusaders prepared and donated two hundred and forty-four backpacks full of winter survival gear, which were distributed to the local homeless vets through our Gulf Coast Police Departments, Wavland Police Department received twenty-four of those backpacks. Next month, in partnership with the Harrison County Board of Supervisors, Crusaders is running a donation drive named Cuddles for Kids, and it is my hope that Wavland and the Wavland Police Department will support them, so it is my pleasure to introduce to you the founder of Crusaders for Veterans, Kevin Cuddle.
Thank you, Mike.
Greetings, nice meeting you all, I've been here a few times, it's been like a couple of years since then, so we're back, we're out running around again, we've been in service since January twenty thirteen, and we're all volunteers, we work out of our homes, and we take on case-by-case situations, and like he told you about the backpacks we did for the homeless veterans on the streets, now we're doing Cuddles for Kids, which is helping the police department go to domestic violence, and we care about our veterans with PTSD, and we care about their kids, so we want to help do a drive, get those teddy bears, get those animals, or I don't know, unicorns, whatever they wanted to donate, and we're gonna get them to the Gulf Coast all the way across to help our police department, help our kids that are doing the anxiety and fear when they got problems at home. So what we're trying to do is get out and about, talk with the council members and police departments, and see who wants to be involved with being a drop-off point, you know, kind of like, I know, everybody knows about Toys for Tots, so we'll do the same thing, boxes out, decorate it up for Cuddles for Kids, and we'll be acting in city places, either put a box out, police departments put a box out, fire departments, you know, so we can get as much as we can, so we can help across the Gulf Coast.
Is there a timeframe, we try to?
We're gonna collect all the month of February, and then we're gonna wait until after Mardi Gras is over, because I talked with a couple of police stations, and they said they're pretty well booked with the Mardi Gras and everything going on until mid-March, so we're gonna collect all February, and then mid-March, we'll start running around doing our drop-offs.
How are you gonna advertise to get this word out to?
We will have, all right now, XSV and LOX have PSAs designed, we're gonna do a commercial run in for it, and then we're gonna be on our social media, and when we put flyers up, we get between fifteen and between fifteen thousand to twenty thousand hits on our flyers, so we will get it worded out all the way across.
Will the collections that are received in Bay St. Louis or Wavland or whoever does it, will those collections stay in those locales?
No, we separate them and we make sure, because not every police station or fire department can take all of them, so we try to work with them, and basically, Melissa already told me they only want like between ten and twenty, because they don't have a whole lot of PTSD issues that they deal with, so what we're gonna do is we're gonna take everything together, divide them among like the seven police stations that we usually hit up, and then if someone can say, hey, look, we get a lot of them, like Gulfport probably will be, they'll get thirty, probably a higher number than others. I don't want these to go into storage, I don't want them sitting in a closet waiting for somebody to go for it, I want these used, I want them out and about, you know, if you run out and I'll tell every police station, when I drop them off, talk to me, if you need more, we'll do a drive in September, you know, we'll keep it round the clock.
Anybody else? It sounds like a very worthy cause, why don't you call me during the week?
Okay.
And I'll, you know, think of some places where we can do collections, and I need your contact information, so we can stay in touch.
You can give her a card, you know?
Oh, you can give it to, yeah.
Okay, that way she can pass it around, whatever and stuff, and I put, we do, our biggest goal that we do is we're trying to get a Veterans Village for here on the Gulf Coast, okay, I'll swap you right now.
Yeah, just give it to me. All right, all right, thank you very much.
I'll give you a call.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to Board Business, item A, motion to approve the depository docket of claims paid and unpaid dated January twenty second, twenty twenty five, in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and forty-three cents.
I'll move.
Was that Ward three?
Yes.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item B, motion to approve the operating utilities docket of claims paid and unpaid dated January twenty second, twenty twenty five, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents.
So moved.
Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward three seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item C, motion to ratify the notice of award as prepared by Covington Civil and Environmental, the Gulf Pride Paving LLC for the Old Spanish Trail pavement repairs project.
I'll move.
What four moves?
Second.
Ward one seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item D, motion to declare surplus and remove from inventory including any and all city of Wavon identification stickers or logos, and approve to sell for scrap the twenty-five, two thousand seven, six-inch Mueller, one American, and two Anderson Fire Hydrants as requested by Bo Humphrey.
I'll move.
I'll second. Ward three moves, Ward two seconds, discussion?
One question is?
I'm sorry, four.
One question, it says, Board voted to do same on eight sixteen, but subsequently rescinded on twelve twenty twenty-three, what was that about? I don't remember it.
We want to use them for co-charge, the hydrant that we're going to repair, we want to use them as a three hundred dollar charge, but we can't do it legally, so that's why we have to go back and sell them out for scrap.
Really?
It's a new packet.
Okay.
All right, any more discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item E, motion to authorize and approve the mayor's signature on the engineering contract and exhibits agreement with Canice Engineering Survey, and for professional engineering services related to the Wavon Kill Cut Off Road Safety Improvements Project, pending review by City Attorney Ronnie Arteez.
So moved.
I have the question.
Second. Ward one moves, Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item F, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the following two National Corrosion Service Inc. proposals, one, the twenty twenty-five Public Awareness Program Effectiveness Evaluation Proposal in the amount of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, the twenty twenty-five Public Awareness Excavator Notice Delivery and Effectiveness Evaluation Report Surveys Emailed and Collected Proposal.
I'll move.
Ward four moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item G, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on M dot form LPA dash one hundred, related to the sidewalk improvement project on St. Joseph's Street between Hurley and East Street and Old Spanish Trail, Jason Canice is the engineer. Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-four amended budget as of one fifteen twenty twenty-five as needed and exhibited. Ward one moves?
Second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? No discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item A, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on the resolution of the city of Wavon declaring support for the preservation of the federal tax exemption of municipal bonds.
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item J, motion to approve and authorize mayor's signature on change order number one from Bay Motor Winding, in the amount of seventy-six thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars as it relates to the facilities condition assessment for sewer collection system lift station. I'll move. Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Planning and zoning, number one, motion to accept minutes of planning and zoning commission's meeting dated January sixth, twenty twenty five, January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item two, the planning and zoning commission considered a variance request for an accessory structure, swimming pool and side yard for property located at four twenty-four Edward Street, parcel one six one C dash zero dash zero two dash one oh nine dot triple zero owned by Sharon Arnold, which was recommended and approved by the planning and zoning commission. They have a motion to approve the variance request with accessory structure in the side yard at four twenty-four Edward Street.
So moved.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item three, the planning and zoning commission considered a preliminary and final plat approval for proposed three twenty-nine, proposed three twenty-five Jeff Davis Avenue, one hundred-foot lot width variance on proposed three twenty-nine Jeff Davis, and one hundred-foot width variance on proposed three twenty-five Jeff Davis owned by Charles Johnson, parcel one six one D dash zero dash zero two dash one eight seven dot triple zero, which was recommended, and three, all were approved by the planning and zoning commission with the requirements that all homes built will have NFPA dash thirteen D home fire sprinkler systems installed. The motion to approve the preliminary and final plat and both hundred-foot width variances for the two addresses on Jeff Davis with the requirement that all homes built with NFPA dash thirteen D home fire sprinkler systems. I'll move. Ward two moves?
I'll move for discussion.
Okay, can you second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Ward three seconds, discussion?
You want to go first?
You go ahead.
Okay.
Probably to save one, but go ahead.
Probably so. All right, I have, I have a couple of questions. Chris, if you want to. So the fire suppression systems that we're gonna require to be put in these, in these residential homes, are they wet systems or dry systems?
Wet.
Wet systems, okay. And the other concern that I have is we're creating two landlocked lots. Is there any requirement, has there been any requirement or any discussion with regard to giving a permanent easement to those lots?
Yes, that is in the proposal, the permanent ingress egress easement.
That was my understanding, because we can't, we can't approve something that landlocks property.
No, he's not, he's.
My understanding was there were two easements?
There's not an easement currently, but he is adding the easement in with this plat approval.
If you do approve it, it has to be subject to confirmation that there is an easement, because we can't approve something that landlocks.
And it's gotta be.
So the easement's gonna be necessary.
Yeah, and it's gonna have to be on the deed.
That's, I don't know that that would be a problem, the survey that was submitted as his proposed shows a twenty-foot wide ingress egress easement down the length of the property to access those two lots in the back.
Is it this one?
It'll be, it'll be in the.
Yes.
Okay, because this does not show that it's going to either one of those lots, this shows that it's going straight back to the immediate back lot on the right-hand side, it's not showing to the other two lots that are being created.
There's only one lot being created, this passes through the one lot that's being created to get you to the lot that's already back there in the back.
Well, then you need to come point this out, because this, this is thirty-eight thousand square feet, this is thirty-nine, right, and it's going to right here, it's not going to either one of these, so are these, is this one lot and this one lot, or is?
This is a lot.
And this is a lot.
Okay. Okay, so.
It does have to extend all the way to that lot.
Yes, yeah.
It's just showing one parcel on each of them.
Yeah, it's a, it's a front lot and a back lot. Okay, yeah, that easement, because this shows the easement stopping short of that back lot.
That line that is confusing you is an old plat line.
Right.
Really shouldn't, really shouldn't be there, but the survey did draw it in.
Right, but what I'm saying is that the easement is stopping short of that back lot, so we just need to make sure that it.
Oh man, it goes all the way through.
Okay.
It don't have to on the.
It will.
I mean, this is just a drawing.
Right, well, it's. A survey drawing.
Jay? And my question's on the fire system, the state doesn't require a fire system currently?
I'm sorry, Jay.
Residential state does not require a fire suppression system, correct?
Correct.
So my question is, can we make that apart of being able to subdivide property, that when you build, you have to put a fire suppression system into it, and because the reason I'm asking is, one of the, one of the problems with the state with residential fire systems is whenever they leak, then you have flood claims and everything else, so what, what's, I don't know what's, what's driving that?
The driving factor on that is the distance back there and the lack of fire department access, Chief Carver can't reasonably get to it, when you exceed one hundred and fifty feet from where the truck can get to, then that is one of the alternatives, is to put in the fire sprinkler system, as opposed to that, he'd have to build a road and put in the mains with fire hydrants and all going down the side.
Let me ask a question, probably for you, Ronnie, as far as no fire hydrants or anything back there, they will have sprinklers, but would that affect our fire rating at any way of not having a fire hydrant within five hundred feet of these properties?
If they're sprinkled, it should not, my understanding in the CRS, the rating system, is if you had neither and you allowed the houses, then it could affect.
I just want to make sure we're.
But as long as you had one or the other.
This was, this was all vetted through Chief Carver and Chief Yat, so we all had some onsite meetings with Mr. Johnson about that very thing.
So the fire department's been consulted, yeah. Anything else, guys and ladies? All right, the motion is to follow the planning and zoning and approve the preliminary and final plat. Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Wait, I need a motion. We're gonna do the same motion?
Yeah, same motion. Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
No.
Four?
Yes.
All right, it passes three to one. Item number four, the planning and zoning commission considered a preliminary and final plat approval, a twenty-five-foot lot width variance and a hundred, seventeen fifty square foot lot area variance for property located at four twenty-seven CS Avenue and proposed four thirty-one CS Avenue, parcel one six two Q dash one dash ten dash zero eight eight dot triple zero, owned by Jody and Peggy Theobald, which all was recommended and approved with the condition that no other variances be applied for, approved for these properties. A motion to approve the preliminary and final plat for four twenty-seven CS and proposed four thirty-one CS.
I'll move.
Was that Ward three?
Yes.
Second?
I'll second.
Ward two, second, any discussion? All right, no discussion, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Item five, the planning and zoning commission considered a conditional use, Jeremy?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to step out?
Oh, yes, I will.
Lisa, we just need to, in the minutes, Jeremy recused himself and actually vacated the room, had a discussion.
Item number five, the planning and zoning commission considered a conditional use to allow a processing facility incidental to a retail establishment at three ten Highway ninety, parcel one thirty-eight J dash two dash thirty-four dash zero one one dot triple zero owned by Joe Cure, but was recommended and approved by the planning and zoning commission with the condition that a parking lot and landscaping site plan is provided and approved before moving forward.
I'll move.
The motion, all right, Ward one?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, the motion is to approve the conditional use, any discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Motion carries three zero. You have to make note that Jeremy's back. Hey, Joseph? Chris is gonna be getting with you tomorrow, probably, Alderman, Richardson, talking about the amount of mud that's going on on Highway ninety, I don't know what we can do other than maybe board rock or something? You can wait, I'm just telling, giving you a heads up, Chris will talk with you tomorrow about that. All right, Joseph, thanks, all right. Item number six, the planning and zoning commission considered final plat approval of cutout parcel located at Highway ninety, also known as Chakto Plies, are owned by George Brumfield, this was recommended and approved by the planning and zoning commission, the motion is to approve the final plat cutout at Highway ninety.
I'll move.
Ward two moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, discussion? Let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. Consent agenda, motion to approve the following consent agenda items, here's numbered A through K.
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward four seconds, any discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero. I don't believe there's any need for executive session tonight. Motion carries four, zero. I don't believe there's any need for executive session tonight, all right, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Ward one moves?
I'll second.
Ward two seconds, let's go ahead and vote, Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Motion carries four, zero, meeting's adjourned.